Council members Paul Coretts and Gil Sadio are at the forefront of asking Major League Baseball to strip both the Houston Astros and the Boston Red Sox of their World Series championship titles due to sign stealing. The L.A. Dodgers lost in the World Series in 2017 and 2018 due to that illegal practice. Funding has been secured to begin the design of the Telfair Bridge in Pacoima. The bridge will cross the Pacoima Wash at Telfair Avenue, connect two neighborhoods, and provide access to the future Eldorado Park. A lunar New Year celebration took place at L.A. City Hall. Dancing and food were among the festivities that honored the Year of the Rat.
This is such a wonderful opportunity to come together and celebrate as a city and recognize some of the many cultures and traditions that are represented in our global city.
A few weeks ago, we introduced you to an awesome vocational program called Skills USA. This week, we take a look at how that national program is making a big difference locally. We visited students at Eagle Rock High School to see how Skills USA is helping prepare them for a bright future.
Skills USA is a really important organization for our students because it allows them a bunch of different opportunities, not only to demonstrate their industry-specific skills, but also to demonstrate and learn leadership skills. And so for video production, that's the one we compete in. Other ones that our school competes in is Future Farmers of America for our horticulture teachers, and HOSA, which is our patient care pathway.
The number of kids that participate here is in the hundreds. I think we're the second or third largest school as far as enrollment within the entire L.A. Unified School District. The self-confidence that the kids get through going through the competitive process as well as doing the service projects, it takes it and makes it into a much richer program versus just do the assignment, turn it in, get a grade. They're out, they're meeting with business people, they're meeting with industry folks, they're having guest speakers coming in, they get a chance to go on some tours, sometimes they might go to a trade show, and they get involved in a much richer environment than is traditionally available in a single-class period that you'd have in a normal course.
Being part of a team can feel a lot like being a family. That was certainly the feeling when the 1970 CSUN College Baseball Champions came together for their 50th anniversary dinner.
Well, this is the 50-year anniversary of the 1970 San Fernando Valley State College National Championship baseball team.
You could just tell by the amount of former players 50 years later that are here.
25 guys, 21 are still around to tell the story.
Relationships we've had for 50 years. Winning a championship instigates that, but you don't have this kind of relationship with these people unless there's a certain kind of chemistry.
My husband was a pitcher. He passed away in 2016. And 14 to 16 of his teammates came home. And in their jerseys, in their baseball, Valley State baseball caps and white gloves, and carried him to his final resting place. So this is a really special group of people for me and my family.
If you ask anybody to define what a team means, this is the ultimate team experience.
There were very few real stars on the team, but we had unbelievable esprit de corps.
And that's kind of like brotherhood. They've stayed better friends off the field than they were on the field.
It's something very special, very special to us. It's not special to anybody else, but it's very special to us.
These are kids that grew up in communities that weren't rich, single-family homes after World War II, and they got a scholarship, which consisted of your books being paid for and your tuition being paid for, and that was it. And they were elated to have that opportunity.
The majority of these guys were first-generation college students, so this was their first experience in college. Their parents did not go.
We all stood for one thing, and it's still there for us. Once you become a champion, you're always a champion.
If you are close to obtaining what we've obtained, strive for it as hard as you can because you will never forget that feeling. You'll never forget that feeling of being a champion or being successful.
You may spend three or four years together as a teammate, but you're a family member for a lifetime.
That is just so beautiful. I love the fact that they were able to take this brotherhood beyond the field. And a new art installation explores the history and relationship of metal works with black culture from Africa to Los Angeles. Anna Marcos visited the California African-American Museum to see this powerful exhibit.
You can make it scary, imposing, artsy, shiny, dull, hard, flexible. You can use old junkyard scraps to create new features, or mold entire sculptures all your own. Metal is a medium black artists have created with throughout history, and now it takes center stage at the L.A. Blacksmith exhibit showing at the California African-American Museum.
I'm really trying to explore the multiple ways that artists use metal to tell stories about black life in L.A.
Blacksmithing with its roots in Africa and Egypt played a huge role, not just in the history of world civilization, but in that of the U.S. slave trade. Slaves brought over from Africa often brought their metalworking skills with them.
Slaves built much of the U.S., north and south, and a lot of that expertise came with black people on ships, specifically like gates. If you think about the kind of motifs that are in iron fencing and things like that, a lot of that came from Africa.
So far, very powerful, very powerful pieces.
Very powerful, it's nice seeing the metal pieces and learning the history behind a lot of the art.
Another motif that weaves itself into the exhibit is the idea of found objects. Some of the art comes from scrap yards or junk shops. Other artists feature burnt-out scraps found on the street after the Watts Rebellion.
For artists to be able to take material from painful times and repurpose those materials into beautiful uplifting works of art that carry with it the marks of where they came from, I think is magic.
I like this one especially because, like I said, remind me when I was little, pieces of metal, screws, and tools, pieces of broken stuff.
There are many powerful things about this work, but what I really like is that he has an Afro pick in his hair with the Black Power symbol on it. And then here in the front, in Hebrew, it translates to Rodney King's famous line, "Can't we just all get along?"
Work and the value of black labor is another theme important to the artists. There are sewing machines.
The history of black women working as seamstresses, and by gilding a sewing machine makes a commentary about what the value of that labor really was.
And there is this, a large stack of the metal tools and objects historically used in black labor, from kitchen pots to sickles and hoes.
This piece represents the West African god of metal, Ogun, and he is revered across Western Africa. A lot of the artists in this show that use metal are thinking about resiliency of cultural memory and cultural identity.
The exhibit is free, and it runs through February 16.
The magic of art is how it can give everyone a voice, no matter how they want to express themselves. In the case of the L.A. Unshuttered exhibit at the Getty, one of my favorite places to visit, by the way, student artists chose to express themselves through multimedia, and the results are pretty impressive. Take a look.
This program's called Getty Unshuttered, and the Unshuttered program is a multi-year arts education program. It showcases the talents of young artists. It really is meant to unleash the artist that is in all of us. The idea of Unshuttered is to be unafraid, to be uninhibited, to really be able to express yourself using the medium of photography. The idea of Unshuttered is really that you want us to see something, like you want to use your camera to expose us to an idea, to a social good, to a social cause. The young people that were part of the Unshuttered program were shining a light on mental illness to spirituality, people that were suffering with different physical disparities.
My pictures for my project, I worked with young women who practiced different religions, and inspiration came from my mother. I only know so much about my own upbringing when it comes to spirituality, and I wanted to explore how other women kind of perceive religion and their spirituality. It's been an amazing experience. I've been learning a lot from just not only the programs that I've joined, but also taking a chance to get out there and shoot whenever I can.
When I take photos, I always think about obviously how good the photo looks and the aesthetic of it, but for me, I try to reach a deep personal level and think about the story that's going to be conveyed. When I take photos, I want to make sure that it's very powerful and it has a message. All my projects focus on alopecia and vitiligo, and people would usually see those conditions as something to be shy of or something to be insecure about, but I think it's beautiful, and that's something that makes a person unique in their own way.
There's an Unshuttered app that can be downloaded on Android, it can be downloaded on the Apple Store, and then when we actually have the exhibition where we launch every year in the summertime, you'll see the projections around the Getty of people of all ages that have contributed to that app.
Whenever you want to do something, just go for it. The outcome will be amazing.
The L.A. Unshuttered installation showcases the work of more than 20 Los Angeles-area high school students and debuts a new set of works every summer. I just wish I was as creative as them. And last week, we had the pleasure of meeting Veia, one of two dogs used by the Los Angeles Fire Department. This week, I got to know two more incredible canines that I can't wait to introduce you to. Oh, they are adorable and so lovable and very smart, Jackie and Blue. Meet Jackie, a three-year-old Labrador who works with LAFD firefighter Jason Chapman. She's part of the urban search and rescue team and helps find missing victims who are alive during rescue efforts.
Our dogs are trained to detect human scent that's, for instance, covered by a collapsed building, and they will alert with a bark. At that point, we'll send a second canine to see if they bark. If they bark, then we'll start affecting the rescue with our people.
Chapman has been working with the canine unit for 14 years and has had Jackie for a year. He says 90% of the time, she works off-leash and for a toy reward.
We first have to find a training site, so we usually go to like concrete recycling centers. So that's where when somebody tears out a street or an old building, they take all that concrete and dump it out these recycling centers, and it's basically in a big pile like a collapsed building. And we literally will hide each other in the concrete pile and then send the dogs out to find us. Initially, when you have a new dog, you're going to be training for about a year before you even take your first test. And then every three years, we will test with FEMA to make sure the dog is still up to par to search.
These canine units are not just based in Los Angeles, but they are deployed around the country with a minimum of four dogs per team. There are a total of eight FEMA teams in the state of California.
FEMA started the whole program back in the 80s because of all the big disasters and the inability for a small local agency to handle the disaster. So we created the FEMA rescue teams, where we can deploy ahead of time for a hurricane because we know it's going to happen, or if we have a major earthquake in Southern California.
Blue, a five-and-a-half-year-old Labrador from the National Response Team, is a Department of Justice-trained accelerant detection canine. He works with Gus Gaeta, an LAFD fire investigator and task force officer with the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, Firearms, or ATF.
He helps us out on many investigations, murders, homicides, fires that are intentionally set by arsonists. He's five-and-a-half years old, and he is a food reward dog, meaning that he only eats when he's training, and he only eats when he's finding accelerants. So we do that on a daily basis all year round. So what we have here is the accelerants that Blue is able to find, anywhere from medium petroleum distillates, gasoline, diesel, kerosene, light petroleum distillates, medium petroleum distillates, which is like your charcoal lighter fluids. He can find like one-tenth of a drop in a football field.
The dogs also receive additional training with ATF. Currently, Blue has mandatory training for two-and-a-half hours every day with Gaeta, who preps materials with accelerants for Blue to identify.
The training entails him alerting, finding accelerants, me burning materials commonly found in your household, like drywall, carpet, flooring, clothes, items that are usually found in the residence when it's burned. We try to identify those items by bringing in the dog, and if they have accelerants, then he will tell us which ones has the accelerants. Everything that he alerts to also has to be verified by the labs. So even though he alerts to it, the lab has to authenticate his findings. What this dog can do, no machine can do.
Blue is one of the many dogs who came through the Puppies Behind Bars program, which trains prison inmates to raise service dogs for war veterans, first responders, and law enforcement. The L.A. Art Show turns 25. Homeschool students get their day at an L.A. museum, and the Ecoplex goes emo. All this in Things to Do.
Experience the latest in modern and contemporary painting, sculpture, works on paper, photography, and more at the 25th Annual L.A. Art Show. Catch immersive video installations, performance art displays, and panel discussions, then check out the new European pavilion or specialty galleries devoted to ink painting from Asia and beyond. Get a true insider's art experience at the 2020 L.A. Art Show, happening February 6 through the 9th at the Los Angeles Convention Center. For more information, visit laartshow.com. It's Homeschool Day at the Natural History Museum. Learn what paleontologists uncovered during recent exciting excavations. Run into dinosaurs at the Dinosaur Encounters Show. Talk with museum educators about extensive fossil collections all around the museum. The Homeschool Day at the Natural History Museum happens Thursday, February 6, from 9:30 a.m. to 4 p.m. For details, visit nhm.org. It may be 2020, but the golden age of emo is alive and well with Emo Night at Ecoplex. Make your way over February 7 for the first emo nighttime of the new decade. They'll be spinning ones and twos downstairs, while upstairs, the Echo will have full band sets from Pretty Pathetic, Veins, and more. Get your emotional music fix at the Ecoplex, Friday, February 7, beginning at 9 p.m. For details, visit emonight.com. And that's a look at some things to do.
That's it for this edition. I'm Rasha Goel, and from all of us here at L.A. This Week, thank you for joining us. Now remember, you can always catch us online at lacityview.org, and we're on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more L.A. This Week.
Good morning, good morning everyone. If we can get everyone's attention. And welcome to your Los Angeles City Council. Today is Friday, February 7th, 2020. This council meets every Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. And we are going to start with presentations. And I'm going to have Councilmember Martinez do a presentation. Ms. Martinez, are you ready?
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, let me just make sure all of our guys come on in. So you can get shot on television, you can wave to the cameras. Good morning, colleagues. I'm sure you all spent this past Sunday watching the Chiefs beat the 49ers in the Super Bowl. But we're here today to celebrate our very own San Fernando Valley High School Super Bowl champs. Birmingham, the Birmingham Patriots just defeated Banning Pilots 27 to 20 in the city of Los Angeles Open Division Championship Games. Can we give them a big round of applause? Mr. Buscaino's not here. Mr. Buscaino represents Banning in that area, so he's not here. We can make fun of him, but he's not here. And I'm just very proud to represent Birmingham Charter High School in Lake Barboia. Birmingham is well-known for the strength of its athletic program, and they also include students from their neighboring Daniel Pearl High School. Of course, we could not be here without mentioning Birmingham High School's sports would not be here if it wasn't for the legend, the true legend, and the friend of Birmingham, former Athletic Director Lou Ramirez. He served Birmingham officially for 46 years through 1998, but continued to volunteer and attend games until his passing at 93 years old just a week ago, he passed away. So God bless Lou Ramirez. I know he's looking down on you and must be just extremely proud of your work and your coaches and all of the staff that took you to become champs. So let's make sure we give Lou a big round of applause. I know he's looking down on us. Colleagues, that's why we're honoring these young men here today. They have put in countless hours of preparation and training to compete at the highest level. Their perseverance has not only made them champions, but it's also pushed them to academically challenge themselves and earn the top-level team GPAs that are higher than most of their competitors. So many of these students will be the very first in their families to attend college, so just want to congratulate you for your academic success as well. They were born and raised in the San Fernando Valley, and we're incredibly proud of them. I want to also thank head coach Jim Rose and his excellent staff for their leadership, dedication, and guidance. And I also want to thank the parents of these incredible young men for putting in the hours. As a sports mom, I can't believe I actually say that, as a sports mom, my daughter swims and plays soccer. Being a sports mom is no joke. We have to wake up really early, and sometimes we go into late nights, but we do it because we love our kids so much. Because sports is a lot, sports not only teaches you athleticism, but it also teaches you the life skills that you're going to need to be able to be successful in life. So I want to also commend the parents, the coaches, for your long hours with your kids. I want to thank you all for your amazing contributions. And also again, colleagues, the city's open division football champions, this has only happened, we've only had four teams in the San Fernando Valley to win this championship over the last four years. We've only done it four times here in the San Fernando Valley, and Birmingham has won it twice for us. So, good job, guys. I now want to introduce, I now I want to introduce my dear friend Ari Bennett, who's a principal at Birmingham Charter High School. I met Ari years ago when I was on the school board. He was a principal at Poly High School, which I live right across from, so I want to commend him for not only being such a champion for athletics, but also for economic success of all of our young people. So Ari, it's really good to see you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for being here. Do you want to say a few words?
Yeah, that'd be great. Appreciate it. Thank you so much to Board Presidents or Council President Martinez and the entire council. As Council President Martinez mentioned, my name is Ari Bennett, and I'm the proud principal of the Birmingham Patriots. I'm also a proud alumni. I graduated from Birmingham in 1989, and so we're thrilled to be here and are really grateful for the acknowledgement of the council for our students. And it's not just their athletic ability and their achievements, but they have to do it inside and outside the classroom. We all know student athletes have to be eligible, so there are certain requirements, and the average GPA of athletes tends to be higher than the average GPA of all other students. You know, this particular team, and this is my first year back in my alma mater, we were so proud because the last couple playoff games, they had to come from behind, showed a lot of perseverance and character, and that's really what we're trying to promote at the school for all of our students, knowing that that's going to contribute to their lifelong success. You know, it goes without saying, Coach Rose, one of, I think you've mentioned only, one of only three or four coaches to ever brought the open division title back to the Valley. And we're so proud of him. And Mason White, who is our all-everything player, city player of the year, regional player acknowledged, and we hope will be playing on Saturdays for a Division One program in the near future. But thank you so much. We're so proud of these student athletes, and we look forward to being back here again next year.
Thank you, Ari. Thank you very much. So colleagues, help me once again congratulate the Birmingham Patriots for giving us our city championship. Just giving them a big round of applause. Thank you, guys. So we have a little frame certificate on behalf of the LA City Council on your championship. Thank you, guys, and bring it home again next year, all right? No pressure.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez, and congratulations Birmingham Patriots. And we expect to see you again next year, okay? All right. Madam Clerk, can we please call the roll?
Bloomingfield, oh, there we go. Bloomingfield, Bonin, Buscaino, Sadio, Harris, Dawson, Weisar, Corretz, Krikorian, Lee, Martinez, Oferel, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson, ten members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business?
Approval of the minutes?
Councilmember Oferel moves, and Councilmember Bloomingfield second. Next?
Commendatory resolutions for approval?
Councilmember Martinez moves, and Councilmember Lee second. And members, if I could direct your attention to the agenda, Madam Clerk, let's run through the agenda.
Yes, Mr. President, there has been a request to continue Item 1A for 60 days to April 7th, and Item 10 to Wednesday, February 12th.
Without objection, that'll be the order.
Item 1 is an item notice for public, excuse me, we continue Item 1. Items 2 through 10 are items for which public hearings have been held. Committee reports for Items 2 and 10 have been posted, circulated, and are now before council.
Members, any specials? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, next?
Items 11 through 13 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration. Furthermore, there has been a request to hold Item 11 for an amending motion.
Without objections, the items are before us. Madam Clerk, do we have any cards?
Yes, there are cards on all items.
Okay, then let's hold all the items on the desk. Then what's next?
Would council like to recess the regular meeting and go into the special meeting?
No, not at this time. We're going to take multiple public items comments. If we could have Sean Murphy. Sean, you signed up for 11, 12, 13, and general public comment. So we'll give you three minutes for the item and one minute for general public comment. Go ahead, Sean.
Item number 12, supporting. Item 11, I'm supporting. What was the other item?
You have 13.
Item 13, I'm not supporting. Sorry. General public comment.
So let's put him to general public comment?
I keep telling you, keep telling my damn council member of the 3rd District, Roscoe keep, I keep telling him to fix Roscoe and DeSoto. Oh, God, DeSoto is the worst one. Pot holes up to this big. And just fix him.
Thank you, Sean. If I could have Rob Quan? So Rob, you signed up for Items 11, 12, and general public comments. I'll give you two minutes and one minute for a general public comment.
Thank you. I want to speak briefly on Items 11 and 12. I understand these are important items, and maybe it's a little difficult to schedule these appropriately, but it is a little disappointing to see grants for housing, 100% affordable housing across the city, the Crenshaw Corridor, both on this agenda, even though we're here today in Van Nuys City Hall. For somebody that lives in the Crenshaw Corridor, it'd take them an hour and a half to get to Van Nuys City Hall. I think it's really important to make sure that, especially for an item like this where there's no previous public comment held, we make these meetings accessible. I'd like to turn to the Immigrant Affairs Committee for my general public comment. It was disappointing to see that we did not have a meeting yesterday. The LA Justice Fund is still up in the air, and I think it's really important that we figure this out and be proactive about it. And on that note, I just want to comment, it's been three years, and we've contributed $2 million to this fund. And to put that in contrast to the waste, fraud, and abuse, let's just look at the Public Records Act requests of California and how the city complies with them. We've seen between 2016 and 2019, $1.7 million to settle 26 Public Records Act requests, cases. $1.7 million. So we spent nearly $1.7 million defending illegality and a lack of transparency instead of representing our immigrant community. That's just baffling. I've got some more comment for the special meeting, so I'll save that for there. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. So we're going to close the multi-item public comment and move to presentations. We're going to move. So we'll come back, we'll come back to public comment, we'll come back to public comment. We're going to move to presentations, and if I could have Councilmember Krikorian? Oh, Councilmember Lee, if you're ready, Mr. Lee? For a special presentation, thank you.
Good morning, colleagues. You know, with all the technology today, some might say that we've lost our ability to connect with each other. But sometimes technology can be a powerful vehicle for bringing people together. In my district, I've recently viewed some groups reaching out to people who, senior citizens that were getting out widowers, widowers, and forming these groups so that we can get together with them to show that our community cares. Well, this morning, I am joined by one of those groups, but maybe in a little bit bigger fashion. I'm here with a group of amazing women who are standing behind me, who are part of the Fabulous Female Corner Facebook group. I am honored not only to celebrate them, but to share a little of their story with you. In March 2015, group founder Nellie Mahesian had friends who were facing very difficult challenges in their life. One of their friends was battling a very aggressive cancer, who eventually lost her life to that struggle, and another of her friends was dealing with the loss of her husband. Nellie wanted to find a way to care for her friends and support her friends through these hard times, especially when she couldn't be there, and so the Fabulous Female Corner was born. But what began as a small group of friends supporting each other with cheer and encouragement through their daily lives quickly grew into a network of 14,000 women in 100 countries. This group has become a safe space for, where members can share daily challenges and stresses of life as women, mothers, sisters, and wives. It was a place where women could virtually meet and share their desires and struggles, and be met with sympathy, good counsel, encouragement, and support. But Nellie sought to take this group beyond the virtual space. She has organized in-person meetings, social events, to bring these women together, to deepen the connections and friendships found in the friendships found online. From potlucks to happy hours to day trips, Nellie grew this group into a global network of friends who inspire and empower each other to pursue their dreams and live their best lives. Today, almost five years since it was formed, this group is giving back to the community through charitable giving. The Fabulous Female Corner holds an annual gala that has now become a fundraising event to benefit charities, to help children, and I'm proud to be a sponsor of this year's During a time when social media and the internet are often used to sow division, the Fabulous Female Corner is doing the opposite. It is building community, and this group is proof that one simple act of kindness can not only have a tremendous positive effect, but can also create an endless ripple. Women across the valley, and now the globe, today are beneficiaries of Nellie's desire to show care for her friends back in 2015. Nellie was featured as one of LA's most inspiring valley residents by Voyage LA. She is a registered dental hygienist by training, but clearly she was meant for so much more. I'd like to introduce the founder of the Fabulous Female Corner, Nellie Mahesian.
Good morning, everybody. Wanted to start by thanking Councilwoman John Lee and his hard-working staff for this great honor. Special thank you to Mr. Karajan and Mr. Nuryan for the introduction. Big shout-out to my friends, my members of the group who were able to make it today. We had double the size group confirmed, but they had family emergencies, and they were sick this morning, so half the group is not here. So they will be watching us later. I planted a seed five years ago, and it organically grew roots and it spread. Seeing this growth and the positive and the powerful impact it had on our community and our women is what keeps me feeling. So many members approached me with their gratitude and their appreciation for what the group has done for them. It's so exciting and rewarding to see some of the members actually planting their seeds and seeing their projects come to fruition, and they share the same exact energy and passion that I have to help each other, to educate each other, and this morning, I couldn't be more proud. Our annual gala is March 17. Our annual gala is March 1st, and it's full of entertainment, wine, everybody is welcome to attend, and there's a mission behind it. It's to help all my network people. We have a network group, a professional network group, that we have established to help the women in our community, in their business world. I'm looking forward to working with your office and all the possibilities that we have. Together, we can make a difference, and I'm very honored to be here today. I'm going to introduce Desiree from Maxx Media for her few words.
I wanted to take a few seconds just to thank Nellie and obviously, all the members here at Fabulous Female Corner. I have been honored to be a part of this incredible network, and it has gone above and beyond for me. I have been through several challenges, and the mission of this group is to let your hair down, have some fun, and also, be fabulous. Who doesn't want that, am I right? I'm telling you. So, when we're around these people that are empowering, I've had moments where I am hysterically crying, not sure what's going to happen next, what is going to go from here, but then you have people in this community like Nellie who reminds you, put that crown, fix it on your head, and let's go ahead, as she told me the other day, put your big girl panties on, and let's keep it going. The rest of the group, yes, and I wanted to say that the rest of the group, beyond that, that's where the mission of this group came from, but it goes even further. And I would encourage you all to come and join our network and be a part of it, because it's growing rapidly, and we are honored and thrilled that the council members here have been so supportive of our mission, and we're so excited to see the incredible things to come. I wanted to introduce one of our other members, Virginia, to say the last quick couple-second of words, and we will end from there, but thank you all so much for having us today.
All right. What a wonderful morning this is for all of us to be here. It's a great honor for each and every individual here. It's amazing, because in life, we represent things individually, but when we come together, we're not just a bunch of crazy women. We actually have a point in getting together and doing something big. And if you have a minute to talk to each and every individual of this group, you'll see that they have beautiful dreams, but their dreams are not just for one person. It's not just for themselves, it's not just for their family. It extends beyond just our own grassroots to our community, which is why I personally wanted to join this campaign with the organization, this group, because being an educator and entrepreneur is very difficult to find a place where you can actually be uplifted. There's so much competition, there's so much competitiveness, which is a wonderful place to be, but we believe that if we join hands and we come together, we can make a bigger impact for all of us combined. So, we appreciate being here. Thank you so much, Nellie. Desiree, thank you so much for the group, for all the activities that you do, and for bringing us here. So I think I speak for the whole group to say that we are appreciative above and beyond, and we're stronger together. Thank you.
That's right. Thank you.
I think the title of your group is aptly named. I want to say thank you for inspiring us today and for showing us the power of human connection and the power of reaching out not only to the city residents of your community, of the city, the state, but now globally. Round of applause for Ms. Nellie Mahesian.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Thank you for that wonderful presentation. Mr. Krikorian, are you ready for your presentation? Great. And I want to warn the members of the audience, if you guys could be respectful to the presentations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'm going to be joined by President Martinez and Councilmember Rodriguez as well. Members, the San Fernando Valley is made up of a lot of great neighborhoods, great communities, and what makes them great is, of course, the cultural institutions, the historical locations that we have, we have great boulevards, we have great residential neighborhoods. But really, what makes each community great are the people of the San Fernando Valley who make a profound commitment to the place that they live, to making it better, to making sure that they do their part to improve the lives of others and to improve the neighborhood around them. And everybody, every neighborhood has somebody like that that you can probably identify, that is the indispensable person in a particular neighbor, the person that makes things happen. Well, in the East Valley, and especially in the community of Sun Valley, that person is Sue Bartlett. Sue Bartlett is the sun around which all of the planets of Sun Valley orbit, and I'm so pleased that she could be with us here today so that we can recognize her extraordinary career and her extraordinary service to the San Fernando Valley. Sue's a native New Yorker. She started out with a long career in public service, working as a social worker and as a parole agent for a couple of decades. And it was through that work that she really made a commitment to changing lives. And then when she came out to, after she came out to California and she decided to move over and become a program coordinator for Sun Valley Graffiti Busters, she took that same commitment to changing lives to that work as well. So while Sun Valley Graffiti Busters is known to all of us in the East Valley as the place that you go when you want, for example, to abate weeds, Sue knew that weed abatement was also a way to make lives bloom. Sun Valley Graffiti Busters might be the place that you go to paint out graffiti, but it's also the place that you go to brighten an entire neighborhood, and that really was what Sue was all about. She's been relentless in her never-ending quest to make Sun Valley a better place. And while all of our offices worked with her and had particular assignments that we wanted to work with Sun Valley Graffiti Busters on, Sue was never content to stop with what she was asked to do. And she helped all of those that she worked with at Sun Valley Graffiti Busters to understand that it's not just doing what you're asked to do, it's doing what you're asked to do and then much more. Look up, look around, look down, see what else you can do to help. That's what Sue has been all about. And really, in every kind of community activity in Sun Valley, whether it's Neighborhood Watch, whether it's, you know, being partners with the local police department, whether it's helping youth organizations, as well as the work of Sun Valley Graffiti Busters, Sue has always been central to that effort. And in working with our city teams as well. She had an incredible relationship with Paul Serrano, the former supervisor of the East Valley Sanitation Yard, and together, these two were the dynamic duo that transformed the entire East San Fernando Valley. She's had a great, and I think Paul is here. Paul, wait, Paul. She also had a great and long working relationship with the staff of OCB, and I think some of the OCB staff is here as well. And sometimes, Sue got a little frustrated maybe with dealing with city bureaucracy, and sometimes, sometimes maybe, maybe not every form got filled out, maybe some things were done in a different way, but they got done, and they got done really effectively. So Sue is a person who's not only made a transformative difference for the Valley, but she's inspired all of us with her work ethic, her desire to give to others, and I don't know really what's next in her contributions to the East Valley. I know they're going to be, they are going to continue, and they are going to be great as they always have been, but with my colleagues, we just wanted to take a moment today to thank Sue for all she's done so far and to wish her all the best in what she's going to continue to do to make the San Fernando Valley great. And I'd like to ask, I'd like to ask my colleagues if they'd like to say a few words. Sue, before you do, relax, just for a second, and I'd like to turn the podium over to my colleagues for a moment.
Thank you, Mr. Krikorian, and thank you for bringing in this such deserving honoree this morning and joining you and Ms. Martinez. I've also had the privilege of working with Sue, and I think is reflective of everybody that's come out to celebrate her today, from our members of our Los Angeles Police Department, all the different bureaus of sanitation, public works that are here, and the members of the community. There is no one that won't tell you the different story, or anything different than what Paul just so captured so well, and that is that Sue just got it done. She was someone that you can always count on. She didn't just do the minimum, she went above and beyond, and she always tried to exceed expectations, delivering on things that even perhaps she may not have even been contracted to do at times. But she was the partner that you wanted, and when I first was installed as a, confirmed as a commissioner on the Board of Public Works, I made my first rounds as a commissioner, working with all the graffiti abatement contractors. I went to go make a personal visit to all the different locations. And when I went to Sun Valley, I remember Sue saying to me, "Well, what are you doing here?" And I said, "Well, I just wanted to see how I can help you, and how I can make the process better for reporting and what we might do differently." She says, "Well, you know, I've been doing this for decades, no one's ever asked me that question." But she found a partner in me, and we were working very closely, along with several other contractors, to help reform that process so that we made it easier for our abatement contractors to actually do the reporting that was necessary, so that they spent less time on the bureaucratic paperwork, and so that they could be out in the field, helping us in the ways that we need them to so often, and we rely on them to do so often. And so, you know, Sue is just, she's a force. She's very well-respected in the community. It doesn't matter if you go into a local grocery store, everyone knows who she is, and is just so adored and revered for her work and her commitment. And, you know, she is the example by which we hope everybody learns and leads with, and that is just to go out, if there's something you can, if there's something you see that needs to happen, get up and get it, just go do it yourself. And she just had that attitude, and she led that way with her team. And you, my friend, are already sorely missed, but we love you, and it's reflected by everyone that's here today. You have made such an incredible impact, not just in our community, but by your example and your tenacity. And so, we just are incredibly grateful and thank you for including me in this opportunity to say to you, thank you for always being my friend, for always working with me, and helping to kick me in the butt when I needed to try and find some ways to help you do the work that we needed you to do in the city of Los Angeles. So thank you so much, Sue. We love you.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez and Mr. Krikorian, and thank you very much for allowing us to honor Sue this morning. I just want to say a couple of things about my friend Sue. So as you can tell, the community outpour of support for her and what she's been able to do for the community of Sun Valley, as you can see by the amount of people that showed up this morning, I mean, this is not even everyone that would have wanted to come out here this morning, so thank you guys for doing that. Sue has never, I mean, I know Paul and I share the, you know, the community of Sun Valley, but she's never once said to me, "This is where your council district stops, and this is where Paul's began." She just looked at one community as a whole, and she serviced the community of Sun Valley as a whole. For 30-something years, Sue has given everything she had to ensure that Sun Valley was clean and safe for community members to enjoy. And I can't recall a day or a time that Sue said no to a project, or didn't show up and said, "I'll figure out how to get it done," because that's who she is. And like I often say, sometimes it takes a woman to get it done. This is the woman who always got it done. Whether it was a web medium, remember the web medium where you partnered with Virginia Beck and Anthony and everything you did to make sure that that project came to fruition? When it came to working with our office on the Wicks Pedestrian Bridge to ensure that the kids from Fernandez Elementary, Poly High School, and Bird Elementary School had a safe route to school, you made that happen, because you were so concerned about the safety of our children. When it came to helping us with the encampments and the RVs that are lined up on Old San Fernando Road and Sheldon, remember that? You came out and said, "We need to make sure that it's clean and that it's safe," and you were out there helping us clean up every single day, and you never, ever backed down from making sure that the community felt safe and clean. So Sue, I can't say this enough. I think that the impact that you've made in the community of Sun Valley, we're going to feel for decades. I don't think God made another Sue. You're not leaving. And so, I just want to make sure that we recognize her work, and for all the young people, I think Sue is one of those people that we should all look up to and want to be like when we grow up. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, colleagues. Members, in Sun Valley, there's not a single street that hasn't been touched by Sue. There's not a single alley that doesn't look better because of Sue. There's not a wall that hasn't been made nicer because of Sue, and there are generations, literally, of people who live in Sun Valley who, over the last 32 years, have been made safer and whose lives have been made better because of Sue Bartlett. So it's a pleasure and an honor really to recognize her for her service. Please join me in thanking Sue Bartlett.
This is a huge honor. I never, I never learned how to use a microphone. There, I'm doing better now. It's been big not to be working since June 30th last year, and I intend to come back, but in a different format, dealing mostly with cleanup and bulk item pickup and trying to unite the Northeast Valley to be able to accomplish more. So anybody who wants to think about accomplishing more is welcome to call. But it's big of the city to recognize this in me. I certainly haven't felt that it was something that I was deserving of or should anticipate. So I say thank you, and thank you very, very much. I am getting better. Slowly, ever so slowly.
It's hard for me to imagine you any better, Sue. You're as good as it gets. So, on behalf of the people of Los Angeles, and on behalf of President Martinez and Congress, Congressman, Councilman Rodriguez, Councilwoman Rodriguez and myself, and on behalf of the entire community of Sun Valley, we'd like to present you with this resolution, thanking you for your 32 years of service, Sue. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Krikorian, Ms. Martinez, and Ms. Rodriguez, and thank you, Sue Bartlett. We all have Sues in our communities, and thank you so much for all of your service. So, Madam Clerk, I'd like to recess the regular meeting and go to our special meeting. If you could please call the roll.
Bloomingfield, Bonin, Buscaino, Sadio, Harris, Dawson, Weisar, Carretts, Krikorian, Lee, Martinez, Ofero, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson, 10 members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Great, so next.
Item 14 is an item for which public hearing has been held. There is an amending motion, 14A, has been posted, circulated, and is now before counsel.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
So we'll wait for the presentation to clear, and we do have people signed up for this item.
Yes, there are cards on Item 14.
Great, and we will take these cards. Let's give a couple of minutes. So we have four people signed up for this item. Dan G., Mike Greenspan, Eric Previn, and Wayne. And Miriam. We'll give you guys a minute each. If you guys could come on up, state your name. So Mike Greenspan, Eric Previn, Wayne, Miriam, and Rob Kwan. You guys could come up in any order. State your name before you speak.
Anyone but Wesson, so you know who I am. After all, you Bruins have had your butts kicked enough. But this time, there's something that you guys can't lose at, because it's the Olympics, and we're getting money. Money I hope the city doesn't waste. How much? $160 million. Already, we've had $2,767,955 for Swim LA 18 and 2019 programs, and of course, I'm wondering if it's actually going to trickle down and be used for what it's supposed to be used for. I always have my doubts with the city when you give them People in the public should be able to look at an agenda and know they can speak on it without knowing your council rules, without knowing the way you enforce them, or without knowing random case law involving Eric Previn and the city of Los Angeles.
So, before we move to the next speaker, I'd like to say something. I'm looking at the agenda right now, and it says at the top in bold, "Items for which an opportunity for public comment will be posted," and then there's this item. So, I think it's absolutely clear on its face. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Thank you. Go ahead, Eric.
Thank you. It's Eric Previn from Studio City. And thank you, Mr. Fable, for reading the line, "Items for which an opportunity for public comment will be provided." That is followed by an empty space. Then, a line says, "Items for which public hearings have been held," which is the city's signal that you will not be taking public comment. So, unfortunately, as the appellate court reminded, the city is in violation of the Brown Act, and it's extremely upsetting at a time when the public cares a lot about what's happening in its community. And here, even today, we have a very important item to CD-8 involving Crenshaw of District that because of pending litigation, sir.
Why don't we talk to the Olympics item? No, get on the, get on the agenda item, Mr. Previn.
The Olympics are terrific. Everybody loves the Olympics, O'Farrell included. Where's he today? But the people from CD-8 couldn't make it here today because it's extremely burdensome to get here. It's an hour and a half, as someone mentioned earlier. And I think that this body is engaged in a series of activities to inhibit participation. And I really think that the city is facing a voters' rights litigation as well based on.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. If we could have Wayne, Miriam, go ahead, Wayne.
So, yes, again, why aren't we naming the disabled Paralympics after Brenda Barnett? Why? You're all a bunch of cunts, that's why. You're no good. And then you go on the kiosk.
So, why don't we get on?
The special meeting isn't put on the kiosk as a special meeting. You slipped it on the regular agenda as number 14. Brown Act violation. Yes, sir. Now, we're stealing all the money, and we ain't stealing enough for the Olympics, no. See, Princess Fable knows I'm right, and you know also, you don't know what you're going to do with the public transportation. Nouri's angry, Marquisi's angry, I'm upset.
So, I don't see this as the Olympics item.
Everybody's upset about the Olympics. I want to see more retards in the Paralympics, especially Herb Wesson's grandson, a fucking retard. I want to see.
Thank you, Mrs. Spindler. Miriam, and if you could please stick to the items, please. Please stick to the items.
Yeah, what a wasted money to spend money on this. We've got better things to do than doing this. So, folks, we need to be better and more prudent with the money and use it more wisely and use it the correct way that it should be done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hope for my time for my other time.
No, we don't do that.
Thank you. If we could have Sean, Donna, and Patricia McAllister. You guys could come up in any order.
Can I let Donna go first?
Sure. State your name first.
My name is Donna. Unfortunately, of course, they have a separate agenda. Of course, you didn't see it when I was trying to look for it, so I didn't even know. But I see the Olympics, so I didn't see the breakdown, but I see that it's quite a lot of money, and we've got a lot of homeless out here. We've got a lot of broken streets out here, broken sidewalks, place out of business. If you see them even right near, up there, near the Browdy Building, of course, I don't care about that, but they'd rather spend all this money on the Olympics trying to show off. And people don't, you know, they're trying to show off how much we can spend and how good we are, and the only places that you don't impress LA at all. So, the ones that are having troubles out here are not impressed that you can spend, what, like $20 billion on a swimming pool or whatever you're trying to do, so. And of course, you won't bring back video conferencing because we'd rather spend all that money on the Olympics. No video conferencing for us.
Thank you. Sean, come on up.
I'm against this item, and when you do have the Olympics in 2028, I will be on vacation. I won't put up with this again.
Thank you. Patricia? Please state your name.
My name is Patricia Ann McAllister. I was born Patricia Gillespie. Now, here's the deal. I had to look at this number two or three times. $160 million for an Olympics? Come on. Now, here's the deal. I'm trying to get receipts. See, that's where the real problem comes in. Where is the money going? Now, I found out that the controller, Galpin, he's not a CPA, a Certified Public Accountant. He's a lawyer, okay? Now, until this council gets a CPA in that position, I'm going to try to get a lawsuit, that is not an elected official position, okay? That means a bus driver can run for the controller and be over trillions of dollars if he gets enough votes. That's a Certified Public Accountant position, and the Galpin, who is the controller today, is not a Certified Public Accountant. He's a lawyer, like most of you. So, I want receipts. A lot of things I'm going to get receipts on that I've been coming to these meetings for. Then we can talk.
Thank you. Candido?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, 1984, fantastic job the city of Los Angeles did for the Olympics. My concern is, is what are we going to do with this money? Are we going to make sure the money does go to the right organizations? Are we going to make sure that the kids get the money? Are we going to make sure not just the big nonprofits, but that we make the parks and make sure all those who serve these people and the kids, that they get the money, and the money is used wisely? Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. And that completes public comment cards. So, we're going to vote on this item. If we could open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Thank you.
And that will be as amended.
Great, thank you. Next. Oh, and if we could send that forth with.
Do you wish to adjourn the special meeting and return to the regular meeting?
Yes, let's adjourn and go back to the special meeting, to the regular meeting. Let's adjourn the special meeting, go to the regular meeting, and we will go to multiple item comment cards. First speaker is going to be Dan, Dan G. You signed up for number 11, 12, 13, and general public comment. So, I'll give you three minutes for your items and a minute for general public comment.
Right. Just so you know, your kiosk is confusing people. You do have two meetings, but in the kiosk, you only.
If you could stick to items 11, 12, and 13?
I am. There's confusion if you would look. Please give me a chance to make my point my own way. I am on topic. Your kiosk is very confusing today. You have a regular meeting, you have a special meeting, but in the kiosk, it's presented as one meeting. That's, I'm just saying, that's why people are confused. You should have two separate agendas in the kiosk. That's why you're seeing all of this hostility. I'd like to start off with my general public comment today. Councilmembers, four weeks ago, Animal Services raided Barkin Bitches, the first storefront pet rescue in all of LA. Mr. Carretts honored them and the founder, the first storefront rescue in LA. You seized 17 healthy, adoptable animals that you're now keeping in your own filthy shelters, which Mr. Carretts is now investigating. They, no charges have been filed against the owner, no charges have been filed against the store. The animals that you seized were recovering from spay neuter surgery. One 10-week-old puppy was on her way to a home that day. There are foster homes who are willing to take in all of those animals, including in my house. I'm willing to take in some of them because not only are you paying for them and they're getting sick in your shelters, those kennel spaces that they're taking up in your shelters could be used to save animals that you're going to be killing anyway. So, why let them out? Why not let them out? Why spend the money and why kill the animals? There are no charges. What are you holding on to these animals for? I cede back the rest of my time. Thank you for giving me the leeway to make my point.
Thank you. Next, we're going to have Wayne. You signed up for 11, 12, and 13 in general public comment. You have three minutes for your items first and then a minute for general public comment.
Right. Very good. So, we bring ourselves to the multiple items. CD 14, the largest lien ever in the 14th District. That means Jose Weezer is officially, for the record, a fucking cunt.
Mr. Spindler, the lien's.
He's a fucking cunt.
Mr. Spindler, hold on. The lien was continued. Please move on to 11, 12.
I didn't know that. You didn't say that, did you?
Yes, we did, actually.
No, you didn't. No. Now, we get to number 11. More Sacramento thievery with cunts and CIDLA housing cunts individual dicks, Los Angeles, HCIDLA. No on number 11. Give that money to the city of Lancaster and the Honorable Rex Paris, the best mayor in LA County history. Give it to Lancaster. No to the city of LA. Then, number 12. Sleazy Marquisi. Did you see his new ride? He's got government plates on a Tesla, Gil. The man is driving a $400,000 car on government money.
So, why don't we move on to the item?
The $400,000 car man wants to steal more money. To do what? To overturn the planning commission. Yes, the planning commission said, "No, he couldn't steal money and payoffs to the developers." The city council says, "Yes, you can steal money by rezoning 23 lots of the Crenshaw." Now, Lynn Moses isn't here today. Lynn Moses would say, "Fuck you," on number 12. Then we get to number 13. Electric battery buses. Electric chargeable battery buses. I don't want those. When I fucking ride a bus, I want it to start. I want it to have gas in it. All you have to do is go to Costco, fill up the gas, and put it in the bus and drive it. Don't use gas the way Cory used it. No, Cory Schmidt doesn't use gas correctly. You have to put gas in the gas tank to drive the vehicle. So, no on number 13. There's no fiscal impact, you say? Yes, there is. It's a waste of money. Look at Bob. Bob knows it's true. He doesn't want to drive an electric bus. Gil is protesting. Gil is walking out of the meeting because he doesn't want to even vote on this horrible item. He knows it's criminal. Have you driven these buses? You don't know shit. No on that fucking item, number 13. Anybody, do not vote for Herb Wesson. Please, vote for Holly Mitchell for the Board of Supervisors or Jan Perry or anybody. No on Herb Wesson. Herb Wesson can't speak. He has this tiny little nigger mouth, and he doesn't have the ability to debate properly. That tiny little mouth has too many large cigarettes in it. No on Herb Wesson. And finally, no on John Lee. Yes, The Times got it right. Yes, on Lundquist. Lundquist actually graduated from college. John Lee didn't. Lundquist actually has an IQ over 100. John Lee doesn't. John Lee worked for Mitchell Englander. Mitchell Englander is a domestic Hebrew nigger terrorist, and John Lee supports terrorism. So, vote for Bernie and vote for Lundquist.
Thank you. And can I remind people in the audience not to shout when another speaker is speaking? Thank you. No, please.
Candido, that's your first warning. Thank you. Eric Previn, you sign up for items. Candido, this is your final warning. It's your final warning, okay?
Please don't disrupt the meeting.
So, Eric, you sign up for 11, 12, 13, and general public comments. You get three minutes for the items, one minute for public comment.
Thank you. I don't think it's necessary to be rude and belligerent toward the public, but I appreciate your chairing the meeting for the first time. The Crenshaw Corridor specific plan, you know, has been a hot-button issue, and as I mentioned, the people from down in the District, CD-8, where Marquis Harris Dawson, I don't know, maybe he couldn't even get here today because it's so out of the way. So, it's so disingenuous to put projects that impact them. Maybe this is one where, I know it's a denial of some kind, maybe this is in their interest, but still, it's rude to put them in a different region. You know, so I would just say, let's work harder on that. The electric buses, thank you. Everybody loves electric buses. And thank you to Krikorian for bringing Burbank Service right to the spot at Universal Redline in your district, David Rue, where we have a lovely open area that would be suited for a mobile pit stop. But instead of the mobile pit stop, what we're asking, and the Burbank bus driver I spoke to said, "Great idea. Take the cage down from the LA MTA restroom that's only for bus workers and other workers. It looks like a jail," and it is at NBC Universal. Welcome to 2028, the Olympics. So, it is totally out of, I mean, anyone who looks at the photograph has to look down in shame. So, why not remove the gates, hire an attendant, and let's provide a place where people, so that Rodriguez and Martinez can overcome their fear to get on the metro and not step in a poopy? Because that's not appropriate for anybody. And thank you, by the way, Council President, for bringing up how important youth sports are. We concur 100%, which is why we would like to not put a large high school regulation basketball court with Prop 68 money, if you can get it, and you can't, on our open green grassy area. Because open green grassy areas, as Bloomingfield certainly knows, is the greenest thing of all. That, there is no greener building, and to come up with a 16-point-something-million-dollar ribbon cutter, that's the metaphor for the next couple of weeks, because everybody's cutting ribbons on all these exciting things. But we want to cut ribbons on exciting things that impact and improve our communities, not pander to parties that come into our area, put down plastic, stick up projects, and get city-vacation property without even the public knowing what for and why. Like the project at 700 feet west of Witzit on Ventura Boulevard, which is a massive something because it's eight parcels, and we gave them property, and nobody, including Carol Terosian, who I believe is the chair of Mr. Krikorian's Know What's Going On Committee, knows anything about it. So, this is disingenuous, it's outrageous, and it has to stop. Now, in terms of item 11, which is, of course, saving the best for last, here we have a virtually indecipherable item from H Sid, as usual. And I am trying to understand why we can't get truthful reporting. Like, for example, why did we have to give back $31 million to the federal government just recently over the shelter beds that we weren't filling? That is, Janice Hahn's head almost popped off at the county meeting. It was so disturbing. And Mr. Ridley Thomas was absent. So, let's, everybody out.
Thank you. Let's go to your general public comment now.
Oh, my God, you're kidding. The general public comment? I love general public comment. All right. The general public comment is going to be very brief. In Studio City, where Councilmember Krikorian, who, by the way, is doing a great job in some ways, has conducted a traffic study with a group called Gibson Transportation, only 150 grand, plus or minus, but the people in the neighborhood who are being impacted by the fascinating, and Mr. Sadio had a Gibson Transportation experience himself down by Dodger Stadium, they're excellent. But what we're having is people who don't know anything about it, everybody in confusion during an election time. So, I just want to encourage everybody on both sides, do not even think, as Jessica Fugati, his staffer, your former staffer, about giving him any money to get the decision the way you want it, because it is crazy-making, and it is insane. We don't need help at Carpenter Avenue, which has been a school for many, many, many years with blocking people from coming and going at hours that suit some of the. Carol Terosian, who I believe is the chair of Mr. Krikorian's Know What's Going On Committee, knows anything about it. So this is disingenuous, it's outrageous, and it has to stop. Now, in terms of item eleven, which is of course saving the best for last, here we have a virtually indecipherable item from H Sid, as usual. And I am trying to understand why we can't get truthful reporting. Like, for example, why did we have to give back $31 million to the federal government just recently over the shelter beds that we weren't filling? That is, Janice Hahn's head almost popped off at the county meeting. It was so disturbing. And Mr. Ridley Thomas was absent. So let's, everybody out.
Thank you. Let's go to your general public comment now.
Oh my God, you're kidding. The general public comment? I love general public comment. All right. The general public comment is going to be very brief. In Studio City, where Councilmember Krikorian, who by the way is doing a great job in some ways, has conducted a traffic study with a group called Gibson Transportation, only 150 grand, plus or minus, but the people in the neighborhood who are being impacted by the fascinating, and Mr. Sadio had a Gibson Transportation experience himself down by Dodger Stadium, they're excellent. But what we're having is people who don't know anything about it, everybody in confusion during an election time. So I just want to encourage everybody on both sides, do not even think, as Jessica Fugati, his staffer, your former staffer, about giving him any money to get the decision the way you want it. Because it is crazy-making and it is insane. We don't need help at Carpenter Avenue, which has been a school for many, many, many years with blocking people from coming and going at hours that suit some of the neighbors who are troublemakers.
Thank you. Thank you. And if I could have Mike Greenspan, you sign up for eleven, twelve, thirteen in general public comment. So you get three minutes and a minute for a public comment, general public comment.
Thank you. Thank you. Mike Greenspan, and of course, anyone but Wesson. After all, we can only talk about UCLA losing football games so much.
So let's go into the items, thanks.
Yes. Now, um, let's, on your Crenshaw corridor, yes, what's that word called? Gentrification, yes. We're upzoning it and we're gentrifying it. We are moving out one class of people, moving on up, moving in a new class of people. I think I actually heard a council member in Pasadena call it Negro removal. That's probably a good way to describe the gentrification process on the Crenshaw corridor. I don't know what ethnic group will replace the African-Americans in this gentrification process, but after all, that'll be for us to learn. Now, item four, uh, excuse me, item thirteen, we're talking about Department of Transportation and your fiscal impact statement about these, uh, these battery buses or whatever you want to call them. And it says, "The L.A. DOT reports there is no impact to the city's general fund since the project is providing L.A. DOT funding for replacement dash buses and is included in the Proposition A budget." Well, that's our taxpayer money, too. It just comes from a different hand. But it's still our money. And of course, how much? I don't see anywhere any dollar-figure amount that's going for it. It's just our money. I know Mr. Coretts, who is a frontrunner for controller, thinks it grows on trees. Well, I should have brought my gloves today and I could have gotten out with Mr. Spindler and Mr. Gus and we could have gone picking money off the trees to pay for these things. I just don't know where the money comes from. Now, let us look at other things. One thing, I could say it's a silver lining, and that is on item eleven. Item eleven, we're talking about housing, we're talking about money through the state of California. And let me go, let me go look at it just so I'm not mistaking on anything. But there is a good thing on the fiscal impact statement. The HCIDLA reports that approval of the recommendations in this report will have no cost to the city and no impact on the general fund. The grant will be issued to the project sponsor on a reimbursement basis with the city handling no funds. That is always a good proposal with the city. Because when it handles no funds, then the case of sticky handitis can't reach for any funds. If they want some money, maybe they can go buy a monopoly board and get some play money. But real money, no. And yes, Brenda Barnett is a cunt. You're right, Mr. Gus. Now, general public comment. Good old Herbie. Yes, we miss him today. Not, he's out campaigning, he's probably going to lose big time, get his butt kicked so bad, you'll think UCLA had football victories against USC that made them their bitch. I mean, that's how bad Herb's going to get his butt kicked. He's going to make it look like Englander had a victory in Supervisor District Five when he finished fifth. I guess that's a super-fifth. No, Herb Wesson. Why, he's a $15,000 jewel of a candidate. Yes, folks. We talk about bad on vaping, then here we give money, 15,000 from a company named Jewel. It's not a Sunday School company teaching Sunday School. No, it's, they're vaping. So I find it hypocritical that we would do that. But then, what do you expect from the city of L.A. with Wesson? Who? Nigger Wesson, of course. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could have Patricia McAllister, you sign up for eleven, twelve, thirteen in general public comment. So you get three minutes and one minute.
Sir, if I called you a blood-sucking Jew, you wouldn't like that, would you? Okay, now, let's get over here and quit using the N-word, okay? Don't call my people the N-word. If I talk about you Jews, you have a fit. Okay, now, let's talk about this grant assistance, number one. It's a gap funding for infrastructure improvements. Okay, now, it doesn't say here how much you're getting or how much you're giving, who you're giving it to. Who monitors the projects to make sure that the funds are going there? Now, I'm, I'm just not finding out about the Controller's office. I've been going over there a lot. And I asked them, I said, who's auditing the Controller's office? He says, we audit ourselves. I said, you audit yourself? He said, well, we have a friend that we know and they come in to do the audit. If Coretts, who is a history major, if he becomes a controller, we're going to have lawsuits flying all around this city, okay? He doesn't even know the tur, I'm asking, what's a financial statement? What's an income statement, Coretts?
So I, I think we're coming off the items, Ms. McAllister.
What's a balance sheet? What's a balance sheet?
Let's get back on the items.
Ms. McAllister, please, get on the items, please.
Okay, now, being a Jew is not a prerequisite, okay? Now, item thirteen, commission from the Los Angeles Department of Transportation. You want to use affordable housing money to get some electric battery buses? All the people on the street, you want to use affordable housing money for some buses? Are you nuts? What's wrong with you people? The problem is you're not qualified to even be in these positions. And once we get this audit and get some CPAs in here, a lot of people are going to be in big trouble. You can believe that. Now, affordable housing units. I've discovered, and I have the list right here, of all of the units that's supposed to be in construction and you have years of 2023, 2023, when they're going to be done. Here's the deal. I've visited the one that you've built on 88th and Vermont. Most of them, units are not affordable. Only about 10 are affordable. 10 units. So you're not telling the people what you're actually doing. You're not even, you're using HHH money and you don't have the units for it. All of the units are supposed to be available or affordable, not 10. Now, let me talk about, we got the grant money. Why are the African-American communities excluded from these grants? I don't see any African-American communities getting any of these grants. And it looks like this grant money are going to the developers that you already have. So they already have contracts, so you're going to slide them some more money in which they can slide a little bit into your pockets. See, I know the gang. We need to break up this gang. This is a gang, G-A-N-G. And Coretts, I'm going to make sure you don't get in office. I'm going to blast your name all over this city.
Thank you. Thank you. And that closes multiple...
No, no, where's my public comment? Where's my public comment, sir?
Go ahead, go with your public comment.
Thank you very much. Now, here, here's the deal.
Hold on, hold on, Patricia. Don't worry, I have you signed up for public comment, don't worry, okay? And I have you for number item thirteen, all right? So Patricia, go ahead, take your one minute, public comment.
Okay, thank you very much. I want to say that, Ms. Martinez, you brought your mother and everybody here and you, we gave you a, you know, good welcome. You're not woman enough to be up in that podium. He is not the president. Rue, we appreciate you being up there. If you want to be with the boys, you got to do your job, okay? You're supposed to be at that podium, ma'am, and you did this the last time I was here, Wednesday, took a break in the, you just got on here. Now, you be a woman and stand up for women and do your job. Herb Wesson never let them do, sit in his place when he was here, unless he was going off to take pictures and whatnot. This is your second time not being in your position. Now, you want to run with the boys, you got to be like the boys, okay? If I was up in there, I'd be at every meeting, up in that podium, taking charge. Now, you want to, you want to get that kind of respect, you be like the boys. Get that skirt off, put some pants on and do your doggone job.
Thank you. That closes multiple public item comment. And Madam Clerk, let's continue item eleven as amended. Don't worry, I have you for item thirteen. Hold on, okay? Hold on, and public comment, okay? So we're going to continue item eleven as amended to Wednesday, February 12th, and we're going to vote on item number 12. If we could open the roll? Close the roll and tabulate the vote. Great. Now, let's go to item 13, and I'm going to call the cards that have signed up for item number 13 and general public comment. So Donna, you got a minute for item 13 and general public comment? So a minute each.
Okay, on number 13, uh, I notice, of course, the electric buses, only seen, the only ones I've ever seen are near downtown, downtown L.A. So it is a problem that we don't know how much these buses that supposedly already covered, how much they cost, and how much the difference between this bus and regular buses. And, well, how is it tied with affordable housing? So, uh, and there is a problem with affordable housing that, that, uh, most of them are not affordable, so it's a big joke, only a small amount, and that's why most of the people who are having such an eight can't find a place to live. So you say, well, you can have affordable housing, but we won't, we won't let you find any places you can actually do that. So let's find out about these electric buses before we do it. Okay, and now, I'm public comment. Okay, the public comment, I want to tell everybody, be sure, not to vote for Proposition 13. That is, they already, the schools are already wasting a lot of money. Betty Yee spent $320 billion and we don't know where that money went to. Schools are constantly, they're constantly taking the money away from the schools. They're not giving it to schools and they're giving it to these big, uh, big projects like going from Bakersfield or wherever they were supposed to go to, that rail project, and any pet project that they find that they like. That's where our money going for Proposition 13. So don't vote for Proposition 13. And also, we need our video conferencing. I can't, unless we come down here, I can't go and speak in front of you. Because I don't want to go downtown where the rats are and all the homeless or that are mad. Yeah.
Thank you. And if we could have Miriam, you sign up for 13 and general public comments, so one minute each.
There's diseases that comes along with it because you people don't, you people are not, are probably using the monies that should be used. Okay, is the word on my, what number?
Item 13.
Electric, electric buses? Okay, um, you know, electric buses uses more energy costs. It's so inefficient. I like the gas buses better. The diesel gas is a lot, very cheap compared to electric. I don't know why you people decided to go to it, but that's, I don't like it. What else? I don't read the books. Okay, it's going to be public comment in 20 seconds. I, I don't know much, much about, about the buses, except the fact is that we need to have more efficient buses here. And no, we don't want the, uh, what's the, what's the new one on Van Nuys? The Light Rail Project. We don't want that one.
You're in public comment already, go ahead.
Okay, we have to vote no on 13, folks, because they're trying to break down the Proposition 13 that was passed in 1978. It's a deception. Do not go for it. What they want to do is draw bonds by, by tapping into Prop 13, 1978, and changing it. Now they can tax the businesses more money and tack on 4% tax instead of the 2% on all landlords and all homeowners in the city of, in the whole state of California. You need to vote no. This is a lie, the biggest lie that the, that the Democrat Sacramento is putting on. My time is up?
Yep, it's up. Thank you. Thank you so very much. And Candido, I got you, don't worry. Let me vote on 13 first, okay? So we're going to vote on 13. I got you for public comment. You're not signed up for 13. Did you sign up for 13? No, come on up, come on up. Come, I'll take you, I'll take you. So I'll take you for a minute for 13 and a minute for public comment. Candido, come on.
Thank you, Mr. Rue. What am I doing first? Public, hold my time, public comment or 13?
Item 13. You're on item 13.
With your permission, I'd like to go public comment.
No, item 13 first.
Well, but I'm going to tie them in together, so I'm going to go public comment. You know, I want to support...
Give him his one minute for public comment.
I'm going to do, I was going to talk about the bus and how I'd like to put Donald Trump on that electric bus and make sure we give him time to spend time with the people in this city, the people that are part of a puzzle, part of that puzzle, which is part of the United States, which makes this country great. Each and every one of us is part of that puzzle and we need to put Donald Trump on that electric bus when we get it so that he understands where we're all from and what kind of people we are. So let me, let me, let me just say this. John Lee, known for 25 years, and I'm not anybody's, and, excuse me, bitch, or I'm not anybody's puppet. That man has worked hard for the kids in, in our community. He has worked hard for the people in the community. He has been there over and over again. He's not Mitch Enganger, he's not anybody else. He's his own man. He will stand on his own two feet and I hope that those of you out there listening will support him. Now, let me put on my big girl panties as it was said earlier.
One second, before you do that. Mr. Spindler, stop shouting while Candido's trying to speak.
Thank you. Mr. Spindler, be quiet. You know, watching Donald Trump speak yesterday, I felt dirty. I felt, wait a minute.
Thank you, Candido. Thank you.
My time's over? I have two minutes. Sir, you gave me two minutes. I talked about the bus and then I was supposed to talk about general public comments. You cheated me out of a minute. Please.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you, sir. In regards to Donald Trump, watching him yesterday, he made me feel dirty and I thought to myself, as a Republican, I feel dirty. And then I thought, you know what? It's something that's always bugged me about him. It's because he's like the Antichrist. If you look up Antichrist, they should have a picture of Donald Trump. So what are we going to do? What are we going to do as people, as good people of this city and of this country? We need to come together, whether you're a Democrat or a Republican, an Independent. Let's come together and be better together rather than doing what he's trying to do. It, to watch him is, it just makes you sick. And I know there's so many good people in this country and that we can stand together. And as I talked about earlier about the puzzle, we're all part of that puzzle. And Mr. Trump, you know, as a Latino family goes back to 1598, sir, yes, we may have picked the pills and we may have done, we're still doing it today, but we do it right. And if, they eliminated us, can you imagine, could you see Caucasians out there doing that? Could you see other people doing that? Nope.
Thank you.
Nope.
Thank you. So that, that closes. Thank you, Candido. If you could sit down. So let's take a vote on item number 12. Let's open the roll. I mean, 13, I'm sorry. Vote on 13? Open the roll? Close the roll? Tabulate the vote.
10 eyes.
Great. Now, let's go into general public comment.
Tough job, council members. I wanted to preview the Griffith Park Bridge project that Mr. Rue has proposed. 5.6 million on top of the 1.4 million that the council has already approved. That's going to be before Mr. Krikorian's Budget and Finance Committee probably this month. My concern about this is, I want to address the fact, a couple of quick facts here. One, Mr. Bonin pointed out at the committee meeting that piecemealing these bridge shelter projects may not be a good public policy idea because what ends up happening is there's an opportunity cost that is impact, that is created. You're committing the money, and by the way, this isn't city money, this is one-time state money under, under this particular program. But meanwhile, something like St. Vincent's comes up and you don't have the money basically to deal with St. Vincent's under those circumstances. Counsel, I think at this point in time, we got to move forward with a detailed consideration of Mr. Rue's proposal and for the sake of, I want to make an oral public, I guess we'll have to wait.
Thank you. That closes general public comment. Madam Clerk, what do we have before us?
The council has motions for posting and referral.
Posted and referred.
The desk is clear.
Members, do we have any announcements? Members, do we have any announcements? Any announcements for members? Seeing none, if we could all rise for adjourning motions. If members of the audience could please rise. So I'm looking to my left for adjourning motions. Bob, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. I'm gonna ask that we adjourn in the memory of someone, uh, who helped restore Reseda Playground in my district. That we ask, I ask to adjourn in the memory of someone who was very active with the motion picture, the tele, and television home in my district, where he was the second-largest contributor. I ask that we adjourn in the memory of a legendary actor, filmmaker, activist, and humanitarian, talking about Kirk Douglas, who died at 103 years young. He was born issuer Danielovich to Jewish immigrants from the Russian Empire. He went by the name Izzy before changing his name to Kirk, uh, and he joined the Navy to fight in World War II. He went on to work on the radio and commercials, on the stage, and of course, the big screen, becoming a true Hollywood legend with remarkable performances in films that we all know, like Spartacus, The Bad and the Beautiful, Lust for Life, The Paths of Glory. Throughout his career, he earned accolades like Golden Globes, Oscar, Emmy nominations, wrote bestsellers, and was awarded an honorary Academy Award and the Presidential Medal of Freedom. But I want to talk about his life off the screen a little bit. Not only was he one of the most critical protagonists in ending the discriminatory blacklist, Kirk Douglas started a foundation in the early 1960s and had a hand in many different philanthropic efforts, not just in my district, but really throughout this city. He and his wife Anne were two of the biggest contributors to the motion picture television home in Woodland Hills. And this supports this home, if you don't know about it, it's a home that supports everyday people within the entertainment industry with healthcare and a dignified senior living. It really is for the rank-and-file members, uh, of the industry. Over the decades, they gave more than $40 million for the facilities and services, including a $15 million donation a few years ago to what's now known as the Kirk and Anne Douglas Pavilion, which is specifically tailored for folks dealing with memory loss and Alzheimer's. According to our friend, Bob Beecher, of the Motion Picture Television Fund, Douglas's connection to the Alzheimer's disease dates back to the time that he and Anne were living in New York City, and their neighbor, who was a former senator and governor of Connecticut, Abe Rebikoff, was suffering from the disease and saw firsthand how truly horrible it can be for a patient as well as their family. So he saw this personally and took action. Beecher also mentioned that Kirk wanted to create an Alzheimer's facility that was wonderful, caring, compassionate, a place where, quote, "The person afflicted could live, but also where family members would feel comfortable leaving their family member to live. It was as much for the caregiver as it was for the resident." But his philanthropy did not stop there. Decades ago, Kirk and Anne saw that playgrounds at local schools were deplorable, and he moved to change that. He changed that in many different ways. He established a fund, a playground fund, uh, to award schools around the region, and together they restored over 400 playgrounds, including the one I mentioned at the beginning, the Shirley Elementary School in Reseda. He also worked closely with the nonprofit Center Theater Group and the Culver City Redevelopment Agency to establish the Kirk Douglas Theater, converting a 1940's movie palace into a contemporary, community-based, live theater space. These are just a few of the examples of his philanthropy, and the city of Los Angeles should always remember the nonprofit endeavors that helped countless Angelinos, of which this, this man, who lived over a century, initiated. I hope his generous spirit inspires other people in similar shoes to keep up this important work. My heart goes out to the, uh, his beloved wife of over 60 years, Anne, as well as their sons, many grandchildren, and all of the folks who have been touched either by his philanthropy, uh, or by, uh, his talent. May he rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Bloomingfield. Mr. Coretts?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to adjourn in memory of Rabbi Harry Silverstein. The rabbi was born in 1926. He came to Los Angeles in 1935, when his father, the legendary Rabbi Osher Zilberstein, became the rabbi of the Breed Street School in Boyle Heights. He attended Sheridan Street Elementary School, Hollenbeck Junior High, Roosevelt High, graduated from UCLA in 1948. He was ordained a rabbi in 1953 and then joined the U.S. Air Force as a chaplain during the Korean War. Following his military service, he was a rabbi in Lakewood and then Lancaster from 1955 to 1959. And then in 1959, he became Director of Education at Temple Beth Am in Council District Five and was there for many decades as, in that position and as rabbi. In 1979, the Jewish Theological Seminary awarded him an honorary Doctor of Divinity degree. He served as treasurer of the Western States Region of the Rabbinical Assembly for 20 years, and he instructed thousands and thousands of students in his more than 65 years as chaplain, religious school director, and rabbi. He had great satisfaction that many of his students went on to become rabbis and canters, and his contributions to Jewish heritage was an inspiration to many other rabbis and Jewish educators. He served as rabbi at Temple Beth Am from 1959 until his retirement in 1991. I know he enjoyed his retirement, and he is survived by his loving wife Kaye of 58 years, also his sons Alan, David, and Robert, many other relatives, including, uh, my very dear friend for many years and current staff member Greg Erlich, who was his nephew and was very devastated by his passing. He impacted thousands of lives, and may he rest in peace.
Thank you. Looking to my right, Ms. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mr. President. And Bob, thank you so much for that adjourning motion. Uh, I had the privilege of actually meeting Anne and Kirk at one of their playground openings many years ago as a young staffer, uh, so I'd like to be included on that. Uh, they saw tremendous joy, uh, and participated in ver, a great deal of those openings, uh, and he participated in them, uh, so, uh, we thank them for their, for their generosity to our city. But today, colleagues, I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Jean Traubner. Jean was a longtime resident and active member of both the Shadow Hills and Sunland Tahunka communities. She was very generous and always willing to lend a hand with fundraisers, parades, uh, and other events, whether it was donating an outdoor Christmas tree to the community to decorate, or dropping off a check to support a, a cause that was close to her heart. A friend of hers from a local veterinary clinic wrote that Jean will be remembered most for her passionate love of animals. She would go above and beyond for animals, her own and, and those of others, to ensure that they receive the best possible care. Jean would often drop by the local elementary schools to say hello to, uh, to the staff and to hand them an unsolicited check to help the children at the schools with much-needed supplies. Though she did not have, uh, children or grandchildren attending the school, she understood that the value and the importance of a community school, and supported them not only with her generous donations, but with her unwavering kindness. Jean courageously battled pancreatic cancer for over 10 years. Although she finally lost her battle with cancer, her fighting spirit will always be remembered, along with her generosity of spirit. And I personally want to thank her for her kindness that she's shown, uh, to me and, uh, and to my staff. She's always been very, uh, a very helpful partner in the community, uh, oftentimes when it was very difficult, uh, she was someone that supported us unwaveringly, and so, uh, may she rest in peace.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Any other adjourning motions? Mr. Kukorian?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Colleagues, I'd ask that we adjourn this motion of the city council in memory of Buck Henry, who died in January at the age of 89, and was one of, really, one of the seminal figures in television and film comedy writing, uh, for the past 60 years. Buck Henry was born in New York, but spent part of his time growing up right here in the San Fernando Valley, uh, where he went to school in North Hollywood and eventually went to the, what was then known as the Harvard Military Academy. In the 1960s, he teamed up with Mel Brooks to create Get Smart, uh, went on to co-write The Graduate, Catch 22, uh, The Owl and the Pussycat, What's Up Doc, and, uh, co-directed Heaven Can Wait, uh, for which he received, uh, yet another Oscar nomination. Perhaps all of us know him best for his work in creating, really, The Saturday Night Live that, um, has come to be such an institution in America for over 40 years now. Um, he's, he was one of the crucial figures in the early success of the show and continued on as, as a writer throughout much of its history. He also had a career as an actor, appearing in Catch 22, Grumpy Old Men, Will and Grace, and 30 Rock. Buck Henry has made a lasting contribution to American culture, um, that will live on long past his life, and, uh, he will be very much missed, uh, in Hollywood and throughout the United States. Buck Henry passed away at the age of 89. May he rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Kukorian. Any other adjourning motions? Uh, Mr. Lee, did you have an adjourning motion? Okay, well, thank you. Thank you, members.